Called to order the January 11th Regular Meeting of the Moundsville School Board. Good evening and welcome. First item on the agenda today is item 1.2, the Oath of Office. So we have returning and new school board members. Excited to welcome those of you back and those of you new into the fold. So we're gonna begin by doing the oath of office and officially recognizing you as as board members. So I'll ask that all of you stand, returning and new school board members, and repeat after me. Raise your right hand. The oath of office. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of the school board member.
Of independent school district number 621.
Of independent school district number 621.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do want to take a brief moment to acknowledge our newest board member, Yolanda McGee. Thrilled to have you as part of the team. And one of the things that we talk about a lot around this table is the changing nature of our district. It looks different today than it did when Sandra and Jim and myself and others were a part of the district. And it's important that this board reflects that changing diversity. And Yolanda is the first person of color to join our board, and we are absolutely thrilled to have that voice, to have that perspective, to have your unique, you know, leadership capability, you know, beyond race, your professional capability to join this board. So we're excited to have you, really thrilled, and congratulations again. Welcome to the team.
Thank you so much.
We'll move to item 1.3, adoption of the agenda. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna move to item 1.4, organization of the board. Every year, we, as a board, organize with officers and different positions, some of which will be on the consent agenda. So the process of nominations will go as followed. I'm gonna call for nominations now and ask that a board member call a slate of nominees.
All right. Thank you, Chair Weinhegen. I would like to move for chair Jonathan Weinhegen, for vice chair Diane Gleschin, for clerk Sandra Westerman, and for treasurer Shawna Bach. May I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. I would move that slate forward. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 2.1, student representatives. I understand that we don't have student representatives here this evening.
Johnson, you do need to move to reaffirm the code of ethics.
Oh, super.
And reduce of Robert's Rules of Order revised.
Excellent. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the code of ethics as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I entertain a motion to approve the use of Robert's Rules of Order revised as our governing procedure.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will take us to item 2.2, open forum. We have 10 people signed up this evening. Each individual, we allotted two minutes, and we'll start with Alita Schulte.
I'm here tonight. I wanted to come and speak up in support of Moundsville staff who may be fearful of speaking up for fear of retribution. Nobody put me up to this. I'm speaking out in support. Vaccine mandates violate the principle of bodily autonomy and restrict individuals' freedoms regarding their own body. The recent OSHA imposed mandate is illegal, and the district is complicit in violating the U.S. Code of Regulations by enforcing it. Under 21 Code of Federal Regulations, Section 50.23 and 50.24, it's illegal to make anybody participate in an experimental program using coercion. Furthermore, under 18 U.S. Code, Section 2331 and subsection 802, inside the definition of domestic terrorism, it states that anytime a U.S. citizen or government is in the U.S. is forced to do something that it would not otherwise do is not only coercion, it's domestic terrorism. Note, the so-called vaccine is actually an experimental gene therapy and by definition is not a true vaccine. The mRNA gene therapy is experimental and as such has no clear short, mid, or long-term safety data upon which to make informed consent. Participation cannot be required without informed consent. Note also that the COVID tests are experimental. They are medical procedure that is emergency use authorized only by the FDA and as such cannot be administered or required without informed consent. The directive to get vaccinated or be tested weekly as terms to keep your job is coercion and because you're forcing your employees to do something they otherwise would not choose to do. Are you interested in committing a civil violation of the law under 21 Code of Federal Regulations, Section 50.23 and 50.24? Are you willing to commit a criminal violation under 18 U.S. Code, Section 2 through 31 and subsection 802, which says that it's illegal to coerce the population in doing and that doing so is a felony? Which of these violations are you willing to be implicated in? And you should know that these felonies carry a 99-year prison term and up to $100 million fine. I request a written response to my questions.
Thank you. Move to Jackson Ashbach.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Ashbeck, and I go to Highview Middle School. I want to let you know that my parents did not tell me to do this. I asked them if I could come speak tonight. Whatever you decide in this meeting does not affect my parents, it affects me. You have to get rid of the masks. Happiness and sadness is shared on our faces. When I see my friend from a long way away, I used to know if they were happy or sad. Now I can't tell. Our faces are normal and healthy. Let us enjoy each other's faces again. I miss seeing my friends' smiles. Don't make us go into distance learning because that is even worse. When we have the choice, most students will agree with me. When we go play together, no one wears a mask. When we're at the store, nobody wears a mask. When I'm at hockey, nobody wears a mask. If we have the choice, the majority of the students would choose to get rid of the masks and show their face at school.
Thank you. We're Mr. Bob Johnson.
I'm Bob Johnson. I live in Shoreview. Consider this: if you need a booster after being fully vaxxed, and you still need to get tested after being fully vaxxed, and you still need to wear a mask after being fully vaxxed, and many people still get hospitalized after being fully vaxxed, then it's probably time that you admit that you've been conned. A Johns Hopkins study shows that fully vaccinated persons who experience a breakthrough infection can spread the virus just as much as an unvaccinated person. Another study has noted that most patients admitted to hospitals with COVID are fully vaccinated. I have the links here. Question for the board: why then are you essentially forcing teachers and even students to get the vaccine when it is now known that the vaccine is not very effective in protecting people? And vaccinated people are just as responsible for spreading the virus. Omicron is now 80% of cases being reported, and 80% of those cases are fully vaccinated people. Over the New Year's weekend, the CDC changed its recommendations. Dr. Fauci said the five-day recommendation was based on turmoil over the holidays and not science. Later, Fauci said that they may rethink the policy because of pushback. Is that science? Question for the board: do you know what you are doing when the people you are depending on, Fauci and the CDC, apparently don't know what they are doing? According to research study, vaccines are very bad. This is why the FDA has not approved the vaccines. They are only approved for emergency use. If they were approved, did you know how long the adverse conditions?
We're at time. Thank you.
One question: any permissions and restrictions for vaccinated and unvaccinated? Should be the same.
Kathy Springhorn. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Springhorn. I live at 173 Dennison Avenue in Shoreview. And I came tonight to kind of just ask about what is the plan for when we are short-staffed? On Tuesday of last week, I called because the shuttle bus, I work at Irondale High School and I work in the sped department, was a little bit late and they're always on time. I got a phone number that said there was no one available to answer. The reason was every single person that works for our transportation company was out driving buses. We have worked short-staffed continually since Thanksgiving break, and it has been exhausting. And as someone whose family just got slammed with COVID over Thanksgiving, I know how differently it can affect the bodies. Personally, I'm still recovering. My son had it very, very mild. But I was out for 11 days, and that left my coworkers short. And as much as we're hearing from people saying that masks don't work, I don't believe that. I think that the science stands for itself. I am very grateful that we have the masks. I 100% stand with my students. It's not fun to wear them. No one thinks it is. But my one student, Charlie, always says every single day, when it's his turn to pick someone new, "Smile your biggest smile, and I will know who it is, and that's who I'm gonna pick." So he can tell who is smiling behind the mask. We can tell that it makes a difference. But I guess my question is, as a staff person, we don't have enough subs. What's the plan when we don't have enough staff to keep our students safe at school anymore? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Paul, it appears to be Wixstrom. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Paul Wixstrom, three kids who graduated from LSU One last year, and I've had COVID. I understand the effects of it. The COVID protocols are creating a mental health crisis, and I'm here to speak to this concern in advance, some suggestions. Within our district, some students are afraid to enter their friends' homes, some children are regressed socially, academically, and functioning neighbors have become alien to each other, and simple tasks become overwhelming because of an uninformed understanding of COVID-19. Important to note here, the Omicron variant has been showing relatively less impact than previous variants, yet there has been great fear generated by the media and other sources. It's time to flatten the fear within the school district. Invite the Moundsville School Board to think about these impacts and the barriers caused by masks. One, the masks eliminate important social cues, which is important to younger children to think about this. If you were two years old last spring, you probably have never seen a stranger smile. The masks present a major challenge and impediment to students who have speech or hearing problems. And three, for students who have compromised breathing, like asthma, the masks trap CO2 and further inhibit breathing. I could go on. To my understanding, there is no randomized scientific study that supports the assertion that cloth masks are effective. N95 masks can have some effect, but not cloth masks. I ask the school board to use judgment and discretion in establishing the policy within the school district. CDC state guidance and guidance from other sources needs to be considered with discretion and rational discernment. It's important to adopt the CDC's five-day quarantine guideline, remove the masks from students so they can engage normally. This is where social development begins. I would like to ask for a written response answering the following: what is the scientific decision basis for the mask policy? And can the Moundsville School Board establish its effectiveness quantitatively to date?
We're at time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Ashbach. Good evening.
Hello, how are you? Sorry, I didn't bring you to show until today like you did last time.
No worries.
That's all right. But congratulations to you two on becoming board members tonight. Happy for you. I just want to bring up something. It's short, and it's not that big a deal. Teachers and staff are being required to upload their vaccine status. This is a point in the personal healthcare choices are being enveloped by their job, by their employer. I understand that's a mandate you guys have to do. If they want to enjoy the privileged behavior at their workplace, they must eliminate their bodily autonomy, or there'll be disparaged punitive policy by not complying. We need to either test everybody or not test everybody. We can't set up two different classes of employees or students. Teachers, I've reached out to your union, and I think Parents United can help work with you on a lot of issues, and this might be one. This room sitting in front of me, who determines how mandates will be applied and how they will treat employees who aren't to exercise their own will, are gonna make decisions. I have already heard from a lot of you that they're afraid of speaking up. Fear of retribution and punitive behavior by the school and the union keeps a lot of the staff and teachers silent. We're a group of hundreds of parents. Let us speak for you. Let us stand up for you. Let us fight for you. You are the best opportunity for our children to have an opportunity and a great education. What do you need, and how can we help you?
Thank you. Lori Lawan.
Good evening.
I also want to speak up, sorry, Lori Lawan, New Brighton, Minnesota. I want to speak up against the mental health crisis with COVID policy. And I think that it's, I know people that I work with, people within the school, it's a major mental health issue right now. People are afraid to interact with each other, they're afraid to get close to each other, they're afraid to even speak to each other. And this scare stems from media misinformation and the COVID protocols, which are ineffective in spread of the virus. The COVID protocols need to be reduced and eliminated in every way possible, as soon as possible, and mainly by doing the following: adopt the CDC's five-day quarantine, remove the masks. These cloth masks don't prevent viruses from going through. Stop contact tracing. Stop treating young children like they're diseases. And destroy the dual-class system you established in our schools. I would like to get a response regarding incidences in which a masked student prevented another student from catching the virus. I believe you're going contact tracing, so then you would have incidences where you know students have masks and other students have not, wearing masks, and did they actually present, stop the spread? I'm guessing you're recording that information. I would like to know when those incidences were, when they occurred, and if it's really, you believe it's really effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois Crumey. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lois Crumey. I live on County Road I in Moundsview. I'm going to read the story of a black man. I am an American descended from slaves, and I have a deep love and respect for my country. One of the harshest criticisms levied against the United States is its history of slavery. Those on the left say this is proof America is fundamentally a racist nation. They refer to slavery as America's original sin, a very misguided and inaccurate analogy. My great-grandparents were slaves in Orange County, Virginia. It is time to recognize that our ancestors may have come on different ships. However, we are all in the same boat now. My dad worked for 33 years at Sun Shipbuilding and Dry Dock Company in Chester. He was a proud, hard-working American who left school before finishing the sixth grade. Yet he raised a son who served in the Marine Corps, graduated from Harvard Law School, practiced law, and wrote three books. My father knew that in our country, my life could be better than his had been. That is my American story and the American dream. It is the gift of God, and it is worth defending and preserving. This is An American Story by Bishop E.W. Jackson.
Thank you. We'll move to Yalson. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Yalson, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak. So first, I'd like to say I'd like to thank all educators during this pandemic, and I support their freedom of choice, of their health decisions, and it shouldn't impact their employment in any ways. I am a parent and taxpayer in this school district. More importantly, today, I would like to talk about the elementary students' mathematics homework issue. I discovered for elementary schools that there's some policy in place that actually limit the amount of math homework, or, yeah, for students. For example, I think some schools only allow the homework to be what's left undone at class. So as a result, up to fourth grade in some elementary school in our district, as far as I know, most of these students came home from school without any math homework. At least, that's my observation. And I know in some countries, we aim to compete at STEM education, math homework starts at first grade. So also, I'd like to stress the importance of word problems in elementary math. It should be practiced more often, because I look at the curriculum, it's lacking that part, because we need to practice students' capability of abstracting real-world problem into a math model from an early age, and that will help them later on in their future education and work. So, thank you.
And Katie Effie.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Katie Effie. I am the parent. I live in New Brighton. I'm the parent of a first grader at Bel Air. I also have a 22-month-old at home. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the Omicron variant. I'm also a physician, and I work in multiple hospitals around the Twin Cities as well as the tri-state area. I think the main thing we can all agree on is we think our kids should be safe in our schools when they're getting their education, and I think that we've all done a pretty good job up to this point keeping our kids safe. I've been really pleased with everything we've done so far, and I've been really excited about the fact that I feel like I can send my one-year, my first grader to school without any difficulties. But this most recent surge is a whole different animal, and you can see that from the numbers. You know, we just got the numbers this, today, I think, that were published about the district. And you can see that in the week prior to the holiday, we only had 13 kids that tested positive in the week, in the district. And this week, this last week, in the first through the second through the seventh, we saw that we had 245 kids test positive. And we're seeing that same trend all over the state. I have to say, in the hospitals, too, we're seeing this. Cases are still rising in our hospitals, and I know that we're not trying to be fearful of this, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we all understand that people are still getting sick, people are still dying of this disease. And I have a 22-month-old at home that cannot get vaccinated. I also have family members who are immunosuppressed and are at risk of getting serious illness. I'm just asking if there are any possibility for having other options, at least in the short term, for parents to be able to either take their kids home and learn from home or do some sort of other method. I would really appreciate it. We're having our kids still eating in large groups of kids without their masks on during the lunch hour.
We are at time.
And that's causing problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to item 2.3, announcements. I'll ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. So there were seven gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $17,684.26. In addition, there were 85 gifts received for the Ralph Reeder Food Shelf for a total of $195,481.42. It is the recommendation of this board to accept the gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, great support in our community. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, January 25th, 7:00 p.m., our regular meeting of the board, and February 3rd, 7:00 p.m., a work session of the board, both here at the district office. Move to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda, and I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It'll take us to item 4.1, 2022-2023 Budget Assumptions, and we'll invite Bernice Humnek, our executive director of business services. Good evening.
Tonight, as Bernice comes up, I do want to...
Oh, and I skipped your superintendent's report.
We can serve that. I'll do that.
Want to do that about...
Sure. No problem.
New year, new pickup.
I'm used to, just following along with you. There's your Weinhegen.
Chris is turning the floor.
Take my direction. Well, tonight, we want to provide an update on our annual budgeting process, which we have now started for the 2022-2023 school year. So we're already out into next year planning. Board members, I know you had the opportunity to review some of our assumptions and talk through them at the work session. Again, at this time, there's no action. There won't be any action for you tonight. We just talked through those assumptions, and we want to make sure that we provide some of the key areas as highlights, not only to you but to the public, as we work our way through that. I don't think you'll see any real substantive changes, and Bernice is here to kind of talk through that and hit some of those highlights. So I'll turn it over to her.
There are three key areas we want to highlight, and they're budget development process. Revenues, classroom instructional expenditures, and instructional support expenditures. Starting with revenue, there are two areas that we want to highlight. District enrollment, projected at $12,338.4, and that's the weighted. And this is a conservative estimate, as we do not want to over-project the enrollment. We want to continue to watch enrollment closely, and we will be making adjustments necessary moving forward. State... State funding, the state has increased the basic Funding Formula 2% for 2022-23. The percentage will be factored into our budget calculations. In the area of classroom instruction, we are not making any adjustments to the classroom instruction assumptions. I would like to note that this means the board can continue with their ongoing commitment to current class size ranges. In addition, all employee contracts have been settled. We want to thank our employee groups for their partnership and making this a reality. Finally, in the area of instructional support, again, we are not making any adjustments to this assumptions in this area. There will be no changes recommended to supply allocations, activity, or other fees. One area that is still in process is the renewal of the district transportation contract. We will be working with the school board to keep you engaged and informed, and we'll have additional information to share with you as the process moves forward.
All right, any questions for Bernice? I know, I know we got to pepper you with questions at the work session in advance of this meeting, and just, I think, important to note, you know, this is one of many stops that the budget will take on its road to adoption at some point in the future, and when we get to this moment, and Sandra will remind us, and I will as well, it'll feel like a, you know, a seven-minute blip to adopt a quarter of a billion-dollar budget to support this system. But important just to note for the public that we spend a lot of time on this. We roll up our sleeves, we ask a lot of questions, we have updates like this in public meetings. So appreciate the ongoing work of you and your team, Bernice, as we wrestle with a really complex budget to support the work that we do as a board and as a district.
And just to affirm that, we will be back end of January at that meeting with an update for you, and then none of this is formally approved until the end in June. So that's when you actually approve the formal budget for the next year. So lots of work between now and then, but we wanted this in front of you now, so people know we're not looking at any significant or substantive changes going into next year, and especially as people start asking about staffing, you know, what is that going to look like, or what about classrooms, and all of that, we're happy to say, we're suggesting the board continue to affirm those, those class ratios that you've had for a number of years, and we'll be working with principals as we move forward through that budgeting process. So more to come, but I think we're in a really good spot right now with this work. So thank you, Bernice.
Thank you. Before we move to item 5.1, I'm going to rewind and go to item 2.4, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Lennox, would you like to...
Sure, yeah, I can rewind.
Would you like to report?
Sure, absolutely. Well, one of the things, and you had a number of people tonight coming forward talking about some of the protocols, increasing COVID cases, you can't turn on, you know, a TV or a news without hearing some of that, and I think we're getting a lot of questions from staff, from students, from parents about, you know, what we might expect moving forward. I did want to highlight that the Minnesota Department of Education actually sent out a communication to all school districts last week, and really, their communication started by stating their belief that they think students learn best when they're in school in classrooms, and I don't think any of our educators would disagree with that. I think that's absolutely the position we've taken, and to the best of our ability, want to remain there moving forward. They referenced mental health, emotional well-being, and the benefits of students attending in person. Now that said, they also referenced the increasing COVID cases. They encouraged districts to double down on all of the mitigation strategies. Everything that we've been doing, they want us to continue to do, layered mitigation strategies in our effort to prioritize those classrooms as safe spaces for our staff, students, and parents. They did tell us the end of last week that as school districts, we should expect updated guidance early this week. Well, it's Tuesday evening, we have not yet received that guidance, so we're still in a bit of a holding pattern, waiting for them to affirm some of that guidance and expectations for schools. We are aware, some people have mentioned the new CDC guidance, and we're hoping to be able to have that affirmed or talked through with the folks from the state. So as soon as we get that, we will certainly be communicating that with our staff, with the community, with parents. In the meantime, we are in an interpersonal learning model. We are working hard to make sure those conditions are safe for our students, for our staff, and for families as they engage with us every single day. We know that people are anxious for updated information, know that we're actively in conversations with local and state officials, and as soon as we have any updated guidance, that that will be shared with everyone as we get messages out. And really wanted to commit, we were hoping to have that already now, early in the week, but certainly by end of week, to get messaging out about what we've learned moving forward. With that, I'll end my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Lennox? All right, we'll move to item 5.1, everybody's favorite topic, Policy Review, and we're going to keep you in the hot seat.
Yeah, you actually, well, policy is your work, but I'm happy to facilitate your work as you go forward. There are really two different things happening for you this evening. The first is that we, as part of our ongoing policy review, when you guys are looking at your policies, we're bringing forward the 1,000 series of ends and goals policies. There are four in that policy group. They are EG 1100, that's the Accountability for Student Achievement, EG 1101, Early Entrance and Initial Admission, EG 1102, Graduation Requirements, and EG 1104, Student Assessment. As board members, you've had the opportunity to look through these, review them, discuss them at work session, and there was no recommendations for revision to those policies. So because of that, there's no action for you this evening, but we do want to publicly recognize that those policies have been reviewed and will be recorded as such for the record and on the website moving forward. So that's the first section of policies for you this evening. Good?
Thank you.
So do we, do we need to take action on this?
You don't, because you only reviewed. So what we would do is just, if you look at our policy structure, there's, at the bottom of each of the policies, it's noted when it was adopted, if it's revised and reviewed. So all we're really doing is noting that it was reviewed as of this meeting. So that will just be updated.
Got it.
No change to the policy. Okay. Then the second set of policies here in front of you are here at your request, and over the last months, it has become clear, the community is attempting to engage the school board in a more regular format. So to that end, you directed administration to work with you in creating a structured time for board members to hear from the public prior to your business meetings. So this section of policies is addressing that. School board policies around public engagement, then, need to be revised in order to establish that time period. So it would be prior to each school board business meeting, where community members can share feedback and comments directly with school board members, rather than trying to squish it into your business meetings. You've actually set that as a special time held outside for people to engage you. You've designated 30 minutes for comments to the board prior to each business meeting. Now, those opportunities, then, would typically start at 6:30, as long as you hold to 7:00 as your business meeting start time. If you move your start time of your business meeting, then that would be reflected and moved, but it's that half hour in front of your business meeting wherever you set that. So that's reflected in there as well. The policies in front of you are BG, which stands for Board Governance 200 through BG 204, all relating to public engagement, and specifically, they had, these impacts or changes. BG 200, there were no changes to that particular policy. BG 201 is revising the 30-minute timeframe and establishing that comments to the board happen prior to the business meeting. So that's what that is saying, is you're actually creating that timeframe there. Policy BG 202 is being revised only to affirm that there isn't, that your work sessions are your work sessions. So there's a public comment, there never has been as part of the work sessions, and that's just affirming that. Public's always welcome to attend. There's no formal opportunity for comments to the board during those meetings. Policy BG 203, the main change there is the title from open forum, which was happening inside a business meeting, to comments to the board, which is now outside of the business meeting. So that's a bit of a, just a language change and shift there. So rather than inside the board meeting, would take place prior to your business meetings. And then BG 204 addresses focus forums, and again, the only thing there is a language change, because it references back the open forum in a business meeting, where it has to reference the comments to the board outside of the business meeting. So that's the only shift in BG 204. So you've had that opportunity to review all of the policies, you discussed them at the last work session, January 6th. At this time, we've made all of the adjustments that were talked about, and so now it's your opportunity to act on these, and because you have a full board, you can do that this evening, should you choose, and I'll leave it to you for next steps.
You know, I would just comment before we maybe take action or other comment. I think we've heard the community loud and clear on how they want to engage with us and an interest in engaging differently, and, you know, I think this is a good step to create a venue for more opportunity for our public to show up, to provide feedback, and beyond the feedback that we receive, and every one of us reads it. It's emails, it's phone calls, it's blog posts, it's, you know, social media posts. We're tracking all of that, but I think this creates a really great opportunity, and it's consistent with what we're seeing from districts across our region and across the country, really, you know, changing and adapting to, you know, an increased, you know, urgency and interest in the, in the public, I mean, the work that we do. So I'm excited about, about this move and grateful for the work of the administration and my colleagues for adding time, because this is, this has added time to, to the work that we do, and we're excited to lean in and hear from our constituents. Other, other comments or feedback or thoughts?
No, I just, just would like to echo everything you've stated. I think in the 10 years I've served on the school board, I think probably the amount of folks we had here just tonight would total all the prior speakers in the 10 years before this pandemic. So this has really changed the engagement interest in the work that we do, and I think carving out specific time to, to really, you know, provide an opportunity for more input and hearing from the community is the right thing. So I think this, the changes we made really are going, a positive change for that.
I agree. I think carving out 30 minutes prior to our meeting will allow a little more feedback. It's, you won't feel as tight during our meetings, that type of thing. I think it is a good place to start.
Yeah, I agree. During my campaign, I got to hear from a lot of the people in this community, and one of the things that they mentioned consistently was, they wanted to hear, you know, be able to address us and be able to communicate more with us, and everybody really wanted to be heard, and I think this, this gives a unique opportunity for us to hear from the community. So I certainly support it, and I think this is a great change.
All right. Hearing another discussion, I would entertain a motion to adopt the adjustments as presented and waive the second reading, because we are all here this evening.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that'll take us to item 6.1, Updates. AMSD and Legislative, Mr. Demay, what is the crystal ball telling you today?
On a cold morning in January, many people got together in Roseville to discuss public education. AMSD met, we had our legislative briefing, I hope so you did get to join us online and watch that. Basically, we moved on our priorities for AMSD, and I'll go over those. Basically, the lead is stabilizing educational funding, ensure modern state school facilities, increase diversity in teacher workforce, reduce mandates, and enhance local control. I don't think a lot of people realize is, we don't get, we, we do get to pick the school start date, but we don't get to pick the school start date if it's before Labor Day. So there's a lot of restrictions and a lot of mandates that we have, and we continue to work on getting more flexibility and local control. We had an interesting forum with the education chair, Senator Roger Chamberlain, and Representative Jim Davney spoke. They both chaired their respective committees in the Senate and the House. I'm a constituent of Senator Chamberlain, and they talked about many issues. I think one thing that seemed to be, you know, you always search for agreement, you always search for, you know, commonality in these discussions, and I think the special education cross-subsidy will be somewhat addressed this year. Last year, the state threw, or the state put in about $30 million more. That's good, not great. I think, and it was a one-time appropriation, it wasn't an ongoing appropriation, and I believe you will probably see the thrust of the AMSD and, and the State School Board Association push hard for more funding in special education and help take a little bit of that burden off our back. But, you know, very important, everybody understands we have to do it. The funding sources have always been challenging, but I believe the state's going to look at a way to try to help us a little more with that. Also, I believe there's going to be some Public Works-type appropriations this year from the legislature. I know that we had our tour of legislators. Representative Leon Lilly of North St. Paul said he went out to Valentine Hills and saw our pathway. He was quite interested in that, so that was excellent. And, you know, this is not a budget year. The state has surplus, they've set our budget, as Bernice mentioned, we had a 2% increase in state funding this year, next year, we're, in 2021, in 2022, we're going to get a 2.6 increase in funding, but that's not likely to change, you know, we should budget on the assumptions we have. But I think ongoing, I think what I was very excited about was, you know, the special ed budget, it looked like there was a lot of interest in approaching that in a very positive and ongoing way. So anybody has any questions?
Exciting times, Mr. Demay, thank you.
Very exciting times.
Any other questions for Jim? Thank you for that. We'll move to 916 update, and before we do that, for the first time in maybe like a couple of decades, we have a new representative for 916 that we appointed this evening, so Sandra is going to take the mantle that Mary Jo left and represent our school district on 916, a really important partnership that we've had as a district for a very long time, and a huge commitment on your behalf to, to serve and represent us. So we'll give you a little bit of a pass tonight if you don't have much of an update. You can punt to the superintendent, but excited to have you in the role.
Yeah, I will say I have my first board meeting tomorrow, where I will be sworn in. So we haven't had a meeting yet, so I don't really have anything to report on. I do know on the agenda tomorrow is the, the financial audit, and that came back with no findings, so, but really, that's, that's all I have report until I have my first meeting.
Big shoes to fill, but you are absolutely up to the, up to the task.
Do my best.
Anything that you missed on the 916 front?
No, other than just for the public, the cycle for 916 very much follows local school board, it'll be very similar agendas and topics that will be coming up. Difference is that 916 serves member districts, so there are a number, 13, I believe, of member districts all engaged, so the board is different, in fact, about double the size that you're used to at a local school district, but representatives from each of the member districts, then, in the programming that we partner on in 916.
And, and I think we had talked about in a, maybe our retreat in August, about bringing in the new 916 superintendent to one of our meetings.
Correct.
So if, if you haven't yet made that request to her...
Nope, I talked with Val Rae and told her we, because Mary Jo was returning, we'd have a new member. Now we know who that is. I think making that connection and finding a time for her to come visit with the rest of the board would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll move to item 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to share?
I do. One thing I just want to report out on is I had the opportunity, I think a couple others on the board did, to volunteering with Ralph Reader for Operation Joy. others on the board did too, um, volunteering with Ralph Reader for Operation Joy, um, in the month of December. Uh, there are, over seven hundred students were served through the Operation Joy, through Ralph Reader, which is a program, uh, for the holidays, working with families in need that are, um, students in our district, um, for, to provide donated toys, um, for the holidays. And so I, I got to volunteer as an elf, um, and spent an afternoon, uh, one-on-one with, with parents. Um, they had an appointment where I would, you know, spend ten, fifteen minutes walking through and helping them select gifts among the donated, um, the donated toys for their children. So it was just very rewarding and, um, a really great service that we're able to, to provide to the community through Ralph Reader. So, just wanted to point that out and thank the other board members that also participate. I think both Heidi and Diane did that as well, so.
Yeah. And I'll tag on and thank all the partners in that organization, not only Ralph Reader, who obviously really runs the whole show, but there's a number of other community partnerships that we, we just really benefit from. And in this case, it was Pursuit Community Church that helped host it and staff it. Um, but I know there's just so many community organizations that support our students and our families, and just want to kind of give a shout out to all of them, that we're so grateful for that. And, um, just wanted to follow up to a lot of the concerns shared again tonight, um, how grateful I am for every one of our staff members, from the teachers, um, to the bus drivers, to the, um, food service workers and the custodians, everyone who's, um, going above and beyond what I'm sure any of them anticipated. And, um, just to let them know how, how grateful we are all in our community for the service that they're providing to the students and the continuity, um, and we know, I, I can't say that I know it, because I'm not living it day-to-day, but I recognize the exhaustion that must be hitting all of them as we go through this third academic year where COVID is continuing to face them. So just hats off to all of our staff members and grateful, and, um, want to know that, uh, our community is grateful and, and support them any way we can.
I will echo what Heidi says. I do live this every day, um, so I know it's, it's exhausting. So, um, I just want to tell our employees that I see you, I hear you, I, I know what you're going through, our, um, district office staff, uh, it's stressful for them as well. It, it's not getting easier, even though we think it should be, um, at this stage, but it's, um, it is exhausting, and it's exhausting for kids as well. So, um, we hear you, we see you. Additionally, although it's only January, uh, we're talking about transitions. So, um, Irondale had a meeting tonight for the kids who are transitioning to high school, um, and Edgewood has their meeting next week for kids who are transitioning to middle school. I'm sure, um, Chippewa and Highview and Moundsy are also having similar meetings, but exciting times for kids who are, um, moving up grade levels.
And last evening, I had the pleasure of attending the Valentine Hills, uh, PTO meeting, um, got to meet a lot of parents, got to lead, meet a lot of staff, was really impressed with the number of staff online. Uh, they're doing some, uh, student, um, recognition, they're doing some teacher appreciation, and to echo what everyone said here, we certainly appreciate our staff and our teachers, um, in the difficult times that we have. Um, you know, I even try, I even pitched people on, uh, signing up for subs and, uh, things like that. And we actually had one parent who had recently gone through the process and certainly endorsed it. And so, um, you know, if there's anybody out there listening, uh, there's opportunities out there if you want to help us in the schools. I'm actually going through the sub, don't worry, I'm not going to show up in a classroom. Uh, verification process, just see if it's easy, and so far, it's been very, very helpful. Uh, we contract with somebody through Kelly Services, they're very professional, they know what they're doing, you can ask any question, they have the answer. So, um, one of my neighbors just went through the process, and she's been at Moundsy High School, I think, four days in a row. So, um, she's excited. So, uh, you know, we appreciate all the help, but we really appreciate the folks who are in the schools right now, and, um, you know, thank everyone for that.
Well, I'll pile on, although I can't be as eloquent as Jim and Shawna and Heidi, um, our staff has been remarkable, um, through all of this, um, and, you know, to all of your points, um, we, we respect and value the work that you do, um, and the administration, I think. Um, you have, I was going to say, none of you signed up for this, but Julie and Bernice and Darren, you like signed up during the pandemic, so this is, this is on you. Angie and Chris, you guys get, you guys are off the hook, but, um, you're really impressed by the, the steady, consistent leadership. This is hard stuff, every single day. Um, it feels like there are a few days that go by where we're not talking about and workshopping something. Um, and, you know, every time we think we've got it figured out, uh, this pandemic throws something else at us. The last thing that I would just acknowledge is our families. Um, you know, just like our staffs, they're, they're dealing with an incredible amount of variability and pressure. Um, it's quarantines, it's sickness, it's staying home from work, it's, it's figuring things out on the fly, and it's not lost, I think, on any of us, the, the role that our, our parents and our families are playing in helping us manage through a really, really challenging time. So I'm bullish and optimistic on the new year. Um, you know, tough, tough times ahead, we heard that from our community today on both sides of, of how we're responding to the pandemic. Um, I know that we're up to the challenge and excited, uh, excited for the work ahead. And, um, I'll close by congratulating our returning and new board member. I'm thrilled to get to work alongside of all of you. Um, with that, I will ask if there's anything else to come before the board. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.